Before I agree convene the public hearing for the warehouse project, I think you can tell from the agenda, we are going to be taking no action tonight with regard to it. We are still in the evaluation process that we have to go through. And we are still waiting materials from the state and the county that would allow us to continue our evaluation. So there will be no action taken tonight. And until we get that information, we will not be able to complete our assessment of the project and complete the long EAF, which is critical to moving forward. I would also just say this. Every email, every letter that has been submitted has been read by myself and every member of this board. We are very much aware of the concerns and issues that members of the public like yourself have expressed. We shared many of those concerns when we started this process. And we are probably not going to hear anything tonight that we haven't already heard in our world. And since that project, we will have to keep the public hearing open because we don't have the information we need. We will be having this public hearing in July again. So I would just ask you to consider if you can bring something new to the table. Great. I would like to place a limit on how much time we're going to allow for talking tonight because as I said, the meeting will not be closed. It will be open in July. And with that, we will reconvene the public hearing. You want to talk now, James?
Sure. Good evening. James Strasser, CHA, representing Renali Super D.C. LLC, who's the applicant in this matter. We've been in front of the board on several occasions and we appreciate your time tonight. Last time there was people who had to stand outside. Some people made it in. So I'll give a brief overview of the project. Also with me tonight is CEO, CEO of United House Supplying, Jim Renali. So he is here and hopes that this project will continue to move forward. So in relation to where we are, everyone knows 690 and traffic signals, the extension to the north, Oswego Road at this location, Henkel working back in into Radisson Development further in. We're proposing a 1,007,500 square foot building to be constructed over three phases. The first phase being 364,000 square feet. Part of the process, we've done traffic impact studies, archeological assessments, wetland delineation, stormwater reports, full construction drawings. I only have the layout plan up here tonight. As previously stated, water to the site, which is by Aqua, comes to a point here. We are going to extend it and loop our facility. There's been conversations about water to the north. This would allow Aqua in the town to look at extending water districts to provide water, public water to homeowners that may have issues, current issues with wells. So we look at that as a benefit additionally. We've been working with the Dodge County Department of Water and Environmental Protection on sanitary sewer. Pump station would be located approximately in this location and pumped down to a county slash town owned system down near Giddings Crest. So that would extend sewers to this area and provide the ability for homes between Henkel and points down in Giddings Crest that currently don't have sewers to tie into a low pressure system. And our plans that we've shown and have been reviewed by the town engineer and we've received comments on. We've done landscape plans, photometric plans, as a segue, plans, stormwater plans that have all been reviewed and replied to by our office. As I also said, traffic impact study. We've had multiple meetings with the state DOT and the county DOT. Our last call as a group was between the town engineer and the engineers from both departments on Tuesday of this week where we reviewed our revisions. And one of the main revisions to the study and the plan was relocating a curb cut into the proposed parcel from this location to the 550 feet from the intersection of Oswego Road. So we now have access point here and our main access point up on 690 slash 48 up here. There have been comments and I just use this, you know, and people making statements about the size of this project and the coverage. I will use lot coverage. We have 127 plus or minus acres on this site. Our lot coverage is 31.9% between building and asphalt. People compare us to Amazon, the Great Northern Mall. Great Northern Mall building is 820,000 square feet with over 2 million square feet of asphalt. Amazon's an 820,000 square foot building with over 1.3 million square feet of asphalt. We're a million square foot building with about 700,000 square feet of asphalt. So in terms of environmental impact, yes, we're taking the farmer's field that's been bedzoned industrial, but used for agriculture for the last many years. But we are keeping 69% of the land as owned green. So we look forward to comments. Once again, we'll take in the comments in the public hearing for the board to hear comments. And we will reply back to those comments with things that come from you chairman and from the engineer and the attorney. And we look forward to hearing from folks tonight and look forward to hopefully getting approvals on this project in July.
A couple of clarifications, James, if you don't mind. When you mentioned water being extended beyond, but your work is not intending to send water to any other locations, is it?
Correct. No.
Okay. I think the public should know that. That's all.
Correct. But we are extending public. So when we do this, we're going to turn the facilities over to the Hockland County Public Water Authority with these minutes for this project. So our site will be totally looped with, in our conversations with Aqua, bringing itself up to our northerly entrance. So this would allow for taking and pulling. And so sizing of these water mains as well. We'll be sized based on what our needs are and potential future extensions.
Okay. So that's, and the same with the sewer. Your sewer is to accommodate you. But are there any provisions being made in that system to account for other connections?
Correct. So we are going to size our wet well and our pumps for our project. But we have, through conversations, you know, statements from the county and the town engineer looking at our wet well and increasing the size of the wet well. Our pumps would only be designed with impellers and motors for our flows. But at such time, because we will be dedicating that to the municipality, to the town slash county. So it will be a municipal system at the end of the day.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. If anyone does wish to speak, please come up to the microphone and state your name. Trying to remember that brevity would be good.
My name is Rob Helfrich. I live at 349 Hourglass Lane.
I don't know if that mic, that was a mic. Just turn the mic on, Rob. There you go. You can take it off the stand if you want.
That's fine. We'll start over again. That didn't go towards my time. My name is Rob Helfrich. I live at... So I don't want to be disrespectful. I'll just talk to the crowd here. All right. My name is Rob Helfrich. I live at 349 Hourglass Lane, about three quarters of a mile away from the proposed site. And so a bunch of stuff I don't talk about tonight, but let me just start with my petition. I'll be brief. We have 850 people on total now that have signed a petition in opposition of this project. And I'll give that to Karen Rice for acceptance in the record. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to simply read from my statement. Then I'll provide my statement to Karen again to be part of the official record. All right. "My family and I are long-term residents of Baldwinsville, having built our home in Giddings Crest, developed in 1996. Our home is located again less than three quarters of a mile from the proposed warehouse site. Over the last 25 years, we've enjoyed our beautiful Lysander living environment, which has included many jogs and bike rides on Haker Boulevard, hikes, snowshoeing, hunting, and bird watching at the Three Rivers Wildlife Management Area, as well as walking our dogs in Lysander Park." So what I want to do, what I want to mention tonight is I want to state why the zoning board needs to motion for a positive declaration after review of the Seeker Part II EAF. I provided a nine-page analysis to Mr. Corey on May 27th, which should have been admitted to the record. I won't go through the detail of what I put in that, in that letter this evening. Rather, I'll just point out the most significant deficiencies on the April 8th Planning Board meeting whereby the intended thereafter motion for a negative declaration. Now, a positive declaration means that there's significant environmental concerns that warrants more studies. A negative declaration means that there's no environmental issues here and they're going to move forward. So the intended on April 8th actually motion for a negative declaration. All right. "Impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surfaces of proposed site. The board indicated yes to land impacts, but only identified one item where a moderate to large impact may occur. They ignored the fact that as provided in the March 16 revised application of Part 1 of the Seeker, the distribution center will be constructed in multiple phases with the final phase to be completed July 2025. The board answered no or small impact to the question. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. The 1 million square foot warehouse will be perhaps the largest construction project ever to be undertaken in the town of Lysander. This is a major construction project." "Impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to the groundwater or aquifier." The board answered no. According to Part 1 of the Seeker, the project site is located over immediately adjoining a principal or primary aquifier. There are adjoining residents that depend on well water. This cannot be simply ignored by the planning board. "Impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna." The board answered yes. However, James Strasser stated 95% of the project is farm field. The remainder is scrub brush. The board thereafter ignored the answers that required to the questions if you answered yes to that section. So I thought I could help the board this evening in this regard and answer the questions for them. A. "The proposed action may reduce the population of lost individuals or threatened or endangered species as listed by the New York State or federal government that the use of this site or found on over or near the site." Answer. "Moderate to large impact may occur. There is a federally protected bald eagle nesting feeding and breeding area, 100 acre marsh within one mile of proposed facility." B. "Proposed action will result in reduction in degradation of the habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by the New York State or the federal government." Answer. "The proposed site is surrounded by Three Rivers Wildlife Management Area in addition to a federally protected bald eagles. An analysis must be made are there any other rare, threatened, or endangered species? Further consideration must be given to the impact of 1 million square foot facility, 40 feet high, lit and operating 24/7 for 363 days a year will have on any rare, threatened, or endangered species." C. "The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or federal government that used, tried, or found on or near the site." Answer. "Consider what a 1 million square foot facility, 40 feet high, lit and operating 24/7 for 363 days will have on the nearby bald eagle flight patterns over and near the site. Over and near." "Impact on agricultural resources." This is a good one. "The proposed action may impact agricultural resources." The board answered no citing the property has been farmed in the past. This is in the minutes. It's farmed. It's been farmed in the past. However, it's an industrial site. I took a picture of the site. It's planted. It's probably 90 acres of soybean. That was yesterday. This is simply false and not true. While the Seeker Part 1, land uses listed as agricultural. Over 90 acres of the site is currently planted. Again, appears to be soybeans. The land has never been an industrial site. It has always, in actuality, been agricultural land for the past 25 years and it lives three quarters of a mile away. So again, let me assist the board in filling these questions as they decided to ignore. This is important from an environmental perspective. This is not Morgan Road. This is not an industrial area. You're causing an environmental impact, which is why you go through the EAF. "The proposed action may impact SOA classified within SOA Group 1 through 4 of the New York State Land and Classification System." Answer. "Proposed site is surrounded by three sides of Three Rivers Wildlife Management Area. Wildlife management areas are classification 3 of the New York State Land Classification System. Therefore, analysis of soil and assessment that may occur through storm drainage, excavation, erosion of the proposed site must be completed." B. "The proposed action may result in excavation or compaction of soil profile of active agricultural land." Answer. "Moderate to large impact may occur. At least 93 acres is currently used for agricultural purposes. The land is currently tilled and planted. Over 50 acres of agricultural land will be destroyed or eliminated by the proposed project, including the removal of more than 1,000 times of natural material." C. "The proposed action is to make irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses, either more than 2.5 acres if located in agricultural district or more than 10 acres if not within an agricultural district." Answer. "Moderate to large impact may occur. Over 50 acres of current agricultural land will be destroyed. Over 38 acres will become impervious concrete and asphalt, converting 90 acres to non-agricultural use to eliminate the harvest of approximately 18,000 bushels of corn or 4,500 bushels of soybeans per year." "Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change of existing transportation systems." The board rightly answered yes. However, they answered no or small impact may occur for each of the subsequent questions. I believe the proposed action will degrade existing transit access and this should be answered as a moderate to large impact may occur. "The traffic study that was contracted by the developer does not differentiate between tractor trailer and automobile, simply vehicles. Differentiating truck and passenger vehicles is required under Seeker 1 Part D 2, J Item 2. Currently, there is often, is no available gap to turn left off of Henkel Road from the Oswego Road given semi-truck volumes. One semi-truck stopped at the light permits a gap for one vehicle. Two semi-trucks can really close any gap where no vehicles will be able to turn left on Oswego Road to Henkel Road. And I have a picture of that too. So it's going to be hard to see, but essentially one truck fills that gap. If there's two trucks at that light, you can't turn left at all." "The study cites that during the peak evening hour, you'll be approximately 700 vehicles entering and exiting the site. That is one every five seconds. If those vehicles include trucks, the traffic will be completely clogged. An inability to transit from Oswego Road to 690 will cause residents to divert their travel through the town of Baldwinsville to eventually enter 690. This will increase significantly the traffic volume through Oswego Road in the town of Baldwinsville." Now, there have been public statements by Mr. Renali in a paper, as well as Mr. Supervisor Wicks. I don't see him this evening, that the concern for the folks is trucks are going to drive through Baldwinsville. That is not what people are most concerned about. It's the fact that no one, no one in the developments of Giddings Crest, the Meadows and Lysander, they're all, they're not going to turn left anymore to go to Henkel Road. They're going to turn right and they're going to go through town. And the traffic, the study as well, it missed a significant point here. "The traffic growth rates used in the study failed to consider the new home growth within the Giddings Crest, Highland Meadows, and Lysander Preserve communities, which have an Oswego Road entrance within 1.6 miles from the proposed facility." This study states, "The town of Lysander was contacted and indicated that there were no specific approved developments that need to be included in the growth projections." I disagree. The study states that the growth analysis were between, the study, the growth, the study time was between 2010 and 2019. Since 2019, there were 82 new homes built in Lysander. Of those new homes, 15 were in Giddings Crest and Highland Meadows. Therefore, about new home growth in Lysander since 2019, over 18% can be attributed to Giddings Crest and Highland Meadows. Currently, there are over 36 lots that are either developed or actively for sale. This new home growth with an entrance of 0.6 miles from the facility needs to be considered to have an accurate traffic study." "Impact on noise, odor, and light. The board answered yes. However, did not indicate anything other greater than no or small impact." Again, I disagree. "The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulations." I would say that's a moderate to large impact. "Of significant residential concerns, the use of Jake brakes, which are diesel truck engine compression brakes. They are often engaged when Northbound 690 trucks come down that incline of Henkel and Route 48 intersection to a stoplight. Research indicates that the use of Jake brakes can exceed 100 decibels. The use of Jake brakes is outlawed in many residential communities. Jake brakes can often be heard in Giddings Crest, Highland Meadow, and Lysander Preserve at any time of the day, including the middle of the night. Many neighbors complain that they rattle their windows. Until the applicant provides the required accurate truck usage data with 141 bay warehouse, the extent of this issue is exaggerated and cannot be fully determined. It will be increased in unbearable noise pollution." "The proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties." Answer. "Moderate to large impact may occur. There are residential neighbors adjoining near the proposed site above 48 and Oswego Road. A 1 million square foot warehouse, 40 feet high, 130 mile long, and lit 363 nights per year will very likely have a moderate to large impact on these neighbors and constant light shining from security and parking lot folks." C. "The proposed action may result in sky glow brighter than the existing area conditions." Existing area conditions. This folks is not Morgan Road. Answer. "Moderate to large impact may occur. The existing area lighting conditions are farmland, fields, and woodlands. It would provide sky glow brighter than existing conditions. The degree of sky glow with the facility larger than the Great Northern Mall would be substantial. Light pollution also changes the natural illumination at night by brightening the skies and least disruption of the ecosystem. Many wildlife animals such as mammals, birds, reptiles, and insects are naturally photoperiodic. Many characteristics of these animals, behavior, and physiology depend upon the day and height influences. Too much light can damage human eyes and even harm hormone melatonin, which is responsible for regulating dinoural and nocturnal visions. This can result in sleep disorders, other health implications such as stress, exhaustion, and headaches, and increased anxiety and some forms of obesity may develop." Finally, a positive declaration followed with environmental impact statement is fully warranted for this project as identified there are numerous items that have a moderate to large environmental impact. Further, if the board approves a negative declaration, they will set the bar very low for all future warehouses and industrial sites that will undoubtedly pop up from the current Henkel Boulevard industrial zone that extends from 48 to Smokey Hollow across from Lysander Park. He's covering actually the zoning map. And you see the purple here, that's currently industrial. It extends much larger than this exact, this system site. In essence, it goes all the way to from 48, that industrial zoning goes right to Smokey Hollow. So you're setting the bar very, very low after this goes in. So in other words, any new, any new building, they're not going to have to worry about worsening the light pollution, noise, or traffic any more than the 1 million square foot warehouse it bill would cause. Furthermore, to make that situation any worse, the town board also changed the decade-old green space law on February 4th, which will facilitate further industrialization. Now, let me remind the planning board and the public, the date of the application is February 4th, which is the exact same day the town changed the law. That's a fact, folks. Let that sit.
"Public interest must always be served first and foremost over those interests of developers and politicians."
I'd just like to make one comment. The Part 1 of the environmental assessment form is the submission of the developer. Those answers are theirs, not ours.
But you did the Part 2. You filled out the Part 2.
The Part 2 is not complete.
I'm basing my statements off what happened on April 8th board meeting, which is in the public minutes. Anyone else can look it up and make the same determination I did.
Hi. I'm Cindy Clark, 27 West Tennessee Street. I just want to give another perspective of all of this. It's a pretty contentious situation. The last time that there was contention like this was many years ago in the village. It was about garbage pickup. I don't know if any of you remember. It was quite a deal. But anyways, I've been in the village for most of my life, starting in 1958. So I've watched the good, the bad, the ugly, anything good or whatever, anything different happening. I've been, I've lived it. And I see a few familiar faces here too that had as well. That being said, I can remember going back. Like I said, maybe some of you remember Tickums, Barkers, the Corner Kegery. I used to work there. I mean, it was a small town. It was a nice town. It was, we had a drinking fountain, a ceramic drinking fountain in the center of the village that everybody drank from. No worries. So, you know, going back to that, that's how I grew up. You know, small town, farm town, 0690, you had going, you had hoping you'd get a ride or go, you know, take a bus or whatever the case might be. So I'm not big on change because I like that small town effect. But that being said, as time went on, then we fast forward to the 70s, near the 70s. This area took a downturn. There were a lot of, we used to like it at Detroit because there were a lot of areas that were closed, dusty storefronts. There was nothing. Half my graduating class, 68, I'm aging myself here, half my graduating class left this area because there was nothing here. Whether it was because of the economy, whether it was because of our local government, Chamber of farmers, I don't know. But it was not a good place to be at that time for a lot of people. People left. Nobody wanted to come in anymore. There was nothing to be offered. There was nothing. The Architectural Review Board came into place in the village. And you see the buildings now. They're all like nicely colored and they all have to be a certain color or size or whatever. That wasn't the case many, many years ago. I'm sorry? Did you have something to say? Okay. But anyways, things, things were not, not good at that particular time. If people were here, they remember those times. So we had nothing to offer in this area. So, and I can remember, people didn't want 690 coming out. We didn't want to change our small town atmosphere. People didn't want Radisson. They didn't want the brewery. They didn't want Giddings Crest. They didn't want Lysander Preserve. They didn't want the Chaucer Circle developments. That directly affects me. But I live on a main road. That's life. I understand that you need to have development. You have to have businesses. I understand that you need to have development, you have to have businesses to survive. We have to learn how to work together. This is not a wealthy community. Most people around don't live in 300 or 400 thousand dollar homes. I think the median income for two people working is $80,000 in the community. Now think about that. People are looking, people here need jobs, sustainable jobs in industrial. Do you know what industrial can accommodate? A meat rendering plant? A crematorium? A crucible steel? I mean, as far as the carbon imprint, this is probably as little as you're gonna find. Really. I don't like change, like I said, I don't either. I don't wanna see all this happening. I don't wanna, because I like how things work. But I understand that you have to have it to progress. We have a great school system, we have a great community now. We have a lot of great people in this community. But not everybody is wealthy. Everybody lives in a very, very expensive home. We all are part of the one big community. So, you know, people worry about housing values. Did the brewery buy on the Radisson? I don't know. I don't live in Radisson, but Radisson seems to be doing pretty well. I don't see it hurt them too much. I don't know. The brewery's been a good thing for this area. Good jobs, good paying jobs, a lot of benefits. I'm hoping this will do the same. We can get some jobs for those people that aren't making 200, 300,000 dollars a year or whatever. You know, there's a lot. I'm sorry?
Brewery making American-made products.
Now if you can't keep quiet and let people talk, you'll be asked to leave.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate your help. I'm not here to start trouble. I said a different perspective, that's all. That's all, a different perspective. You know, if you wanna come at me, come at me, please. But that's all, I just wanna give people a different perspective. And like I say, the land has been industrial forever, ever, ever. Did you think it was gonna just lay there? Open, green? Farm, it's zoned industrial.
Being farmed.
But it's still zoned industrial. But anyways, may I have my moment? And the next person would like to argue with me or the board or whatever, you can please do it after that. Thank you very much. And so right now, this land is zoned industrial. So regardless, do you think it's gonna stand there? That's a chunk of land. Did you know they made, I checked the records, over $700,000. Any of you get offered for 127 acres, over $700,000? Are you gonna say, no, I'm gonna leave it green because nobody wants to do anything with this land? I don't wanna upset my neighbors. I don't wanna do this, I don't wanna do that. Are you kidding me? $700,000 and you're gonna say no? Well, whatever, but this is who came first. This is where it is. They bought the land. You can't take away, you cannot take, excuse me, I'm trying to please. You can come up next to people and be so kind, but please, allow me my couple moments, just a few more. You cannot tell a property owner what to do with his property. There are, there's such things as property rights. If you had land somewhere and you wanted to sell it to somebody to offer you money just because your neighbor didn't like what you were gonna do with it, should that preclude you from selling it to that person to make a profit? I mean, come on, what are we talking about here? But anyways, already on this particular land, it's brought in over $600,000 in cost per permits. Now, I don't know about you, but I'm not a wealthy person. And something that can help us to increase the tax base, to lessen the load on us, I would welcome it, really, truly. I mean, you know, if it can help us between Budweiser and Gypsum in the larger industries, this is what sustains an area, not just houses. You have to have jobs. Why do you think people move here? Because we've got things to offer. We've got the 690, we've got the thruway. Why are businesses coming in, other businesses, Taco Bell, things like that? They do their demographics, they do their homework. They see the growth, the potential, the people. But you have to have, you have to have things to support all of this. If you don't have jobs or places for people to go, then people, I saw it happen. I lived here, I lived through it, I saw it happen. So it could happen. I'm sure it's happened in other cities where people don't want growth. Things fall wayside. The cities die. Families, you probably got relatives wasn't in the city because there's nothing here to offer. You got your family scattered all over United States or all over the state of New York. But anyways, I inspire all the concerns about that land and all that. I'm sure that there are, there are plenty of bad rules because I think very, very much wealthy gentlemen are gonna let something go through that isn't properly taken care of and handled and legal. I mean, are you following these guys that they're gonna do something illegal or what? You know, come on. I mean, they've got, they've got something too. They've got, they're not political, they're just doing their job. Somebody wants to do something with their land. And like I say. Okay. I can see that people don't wanna speak anymore. I'm not used to being treated quite so rudely and I apologize. But anyways, that being said, that being said, I'm hoping that there's a community, we can all understand it's not just a few people that are affected either way. All of us can be affected positively, negatively. And like I say, Giddings Crest came in, like the Preserve, Radisson, the brewery, Gypsum, all those industries and housing developments. The housing developments adversely affect me more than anything else. But I like to see the growth in the area. This is my area, I love my community. So why try and hurt somebody else that wants to make something? Try and bring the community up. It's out of the way, it's a very low park manager. Like I say, we need to bring the point, a crematorium. You know, think of the possibilities. Think a little bit beyond the edge of your own noses. Think of the greatest good to the whole community, not just a few, that's all. And yet I hope everybody works together and we can all come together as a community and everybody is best. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Barnett. I live on the corner of Donald Terrace and Dexter Parkway. First and foremost, I'd like to say, congratulate, that was very good, bringing your points up. I agree with all of them, I disagree with almost everything you said. Let's start with a carbon footprint. Your carbon footprint, your total is zero, I mean, it's 100%. All you're generating is carbon. A field of corn, you can check the USDA on this, it's got almost as much carbon absorbing capability as open ground corn. That land has been farmed for years. It's a beautiful farm field. When you say it's doing nothing, it's doing corn and soybean. Is that nothing? That's beautiful agriculture. That's the fact of Budweiser. Budweiser is using American grain, barley, to make a product that people wanna drink, okay? I would wager a month's pay that his auto parts distributor is 100% made in China. What percentage of your parts are made in China?
That doesn't have to do with.
It's got a lot to do with.
I'll answer the question.
Okay, let's hear it.
We don't make a rotor in the United States of America, that's not my fault.
You could, excuse me, you could.
You want me to start manufacturing over there or you want me to have smokestacks? You want me to have smokestacks? Let me figure, you asked me a question.
Yeah, what percentage of, what percentage of your parts are made in China?
90%.
99.
Because we, no, it's not 99.
That's it, the only thing that you're not gonna.
Now you're gonna tell me.
Is it petroleum which is made in America? Are you gonna fly a Chinese flag there? Are you gonna ruin the whole North White Hart? Not a company that sells Chinese parts.
All right.
Stop this right now, all right. All right. Knock it off. All right, this public hearing is adjourned. And if you people cannot come back here, I don't give a crap. It's still, it will be reopened next month.
Fly the Chinese flag, please.
We're done for tonight on this public hearing. You'll have an opportunity next month. But you're gonna come here and you're gonna behave appropriately. End of discussion.
I can give my point of view in a very civilized manner.
If you want, right now, right now, hold it. Right now, the public hearing is completely out of control. The chairman of the planning board, in his discretion, adjourn this public hearing until the next meeting and that's what he gives, that's what he's gonna do.
That's what we're doing right now.
Does anybody wanna make up vote to do that?
Pardon?
Does anybody want to?
I will, I will move that we adjourn this meeting till July meeting.
Does anybody else want a secondhand motion?
The only guy out of control was Renali.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
I voted no. Karen, I was a no.
You don't, you don't understand what that's all about.
When do we have planning board elections?
Have you ever seen anything like this? Have you ever seen anything, there was more fucking rage in the nation than ever?
But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the way, I'm not the way this shit goes. But there is an issue here, China doesn't.